We now call this council meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala for the invocation, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's prayer is the prayer of Saint Francis. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which has asked one nation under God, in this soul delivered to all.
Listen to.
All right, we now move on to the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Alcala?
Here.
Ortiz? Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
I know that Councilwoman Ortiz will be in shortly. We now proceed with the appointments, if the clerk would read.
Item 2A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Randy Clayton to the Topeka Public Building Commission for a term ending September 30th, 2024.
We have the appointments. The mayor does not have a vote on this. What is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval.
We have a motion for approval by the deputy mayor. We have a second by Councilwoman Nager. Additional comments or questions?
Yep, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Duncan.
I am in full support of Mr. Clayton's appointment, and I encourage you all to vote yes. However, as he and my wife are business partners, I will be abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, we proceed with the vote by roll call.
Councilwoman Ortiz is joining the meeting.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Abstain.
And Lesser? We have seven yeses.
Seven having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the action items, if the clerk would read.
Mayor? Mr. Clayton is here.
Oh, Mr. Clayton, it's so great to have you there. If you could please rise so that we can recognize you. Thank you so much for your leadership in our community, for all of your work, and for your relationship with the council, and for serving our city.
I have a 20-minute speech prepared.
Thanks, thanks, no thanks. Okay, now we do proceed to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
We skip the consent agenda, right? Mayor? That'll be the consent agenda next. Item 3A?
The consent agenda, Mayor.
Oh, the consent agenda, I just skipped over it. Yes, we proceed to the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
Item 3A are the minutes of the regular meeting of October 13th, 2020, and there are no applications.
We have heard the consent agenda item. What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by the deputy mayor. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Dobler, seconds. Any comments or questions with regards to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
That is nine yeses.
Councilman Lesser has also joined in the meeting right now.
All right, motion carries. We now move on to the action items, if the clerk would read. The item A.
Item A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout supporting the city of Topeka's application for funding from the Kansas Department of Transportation for Topeka Bike Ways Phase Four implementation.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're excited to be bringing before you a resolution seeking support for an application we're making for transportation alternatives. Tonight, Bill Finder will give you an update on what the program would consist of and what we're putting our application forward and to the state for. So at this time, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Pleased, as you heard, to present a proposal for your support for our Phase Four of Bike Ways. This was actually presented to the Infrastructure Committee last month as well, and that came out of the Infrastructure Committee with unanimous support. So I just wanted to say that upfront. We do this every couple of years. The TA, the Transportation Alternatives, and its predecessors are the main funding vehicle for all of the bike way facilities, trail projects in the city that you see over the years. It lines up very nicely with the countywide sales tax that has been committed for implementing the Bike Ways Master Plan every couple of years. So that syncs up nice. It's a very highly leveraged program. We only have to give 20%, and we get back 80%. So that's all good. That's really good. This Phase Four is an outgrowth of a recent update to the Bike Ways Master Plan that was approved by the MTPO Policy Board this summer with public input in the past 12 months. What came out of that, and probably what is different this time around than maybe the other years, is that this actually improves existing routes to make them more low-stress, more safe, higher quality versus just expanding the mileage on the network itself. So think 8th Street, for instance. If you've taken 8th Street recently, you've noticed we've done a little work, and that was the last TA application that we were successful on. That was converted between downtown and the medical district from a four-lane, probably a little overbuilt, lower-volume street to right-size it for vehicles and bikes with separation with bike lanes. Also some parking accommodation there. So that's an example of what we would try and be doing in this application. And what came out of what's called the fast track, the update to the plan, were two kind of key priorities. One was better connection, strengthening our connections to our downtown network, which, as the map is up there, we would be connecting on all four sides. East Six, we would be connecting north, Kansas Avenue to Noto. We would be connecting to the south to Landon Trail. And then also on the west, we would continue that 8th Street connection into downtown. So all the while, trying to make those, again, low-stress, very safe, separation, and accommodating that mode. So that's the first, if you will, application. The second application would be another very high-priority thing that came out of the public input, which was connections to trails. We have an incredible trail system through the city with the Shunga Trail, Landon, Soldier Creek, and now Deer Creek, which the county is completing with this year. And they're looking to connect the Lake Shawnee with a new application. So more connections to those trails in the neighborhoods. And so we have about seven or so of those, ranging from east Topeka, south and central, to roughly around Randolph. And that is a high priority that came out of that plan. So that's the second application. The third application is actually an outgrowth of a current city project, a street project that was funded in the CIP for Northwest Tyler, between Lyman and Waddell. The proposal would be to, right now, the project does not have a multi-use path or a mode facility for bikes. It would just be regular sidewalks along there. So we want to leverage those funds that go into that street project to expand one of those sides for a multi-use path and make a connection to the Soldier Creek Trail as well. So all told, together, if you add all those up, that's about $2 million worth of requests for the, not requests, but total project cost. Our requests would be, or our match would be about $400,000 in that. So enough room to plan for contingencies if we're successful with all three of those. So I'll stand now for any questions or comments that I can help with.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, I've had some questions about the interface between the city and county, county owning the trails, owning and maintaining the trails. I guess the question was basically, why are we funding some of these projects when they just get turned over to the county? So could you, I believe the majority of these projects are on-street except for the connections to the trail. So we're not really doing a lot to the trails themselves. And then, if you could, maybe you covered this and I missed it, but talk a little bit about the funding. So a lot of the funding is coming from the half-cent sales tax as opposed to city funds. Is that correct?
Excuse me, yes, Councilman Dobler, that is correct. Speaking directly to the trail projects, for instance, their connection. So they're connecting our on-street facilities to the trail facility. The funding would be coming through, again, a countywide half-cent sales tax for those, and it would amount to, our part would be, using that source, would be about $40,000 to leverage another $150,000, $60,000. So the construction of those connections then would be done through this grant and through that countywide sales tax. It's not necessarily a city sole source, and then turned over to the county for maintenance that they have agreed to. So does that answer, or do I need to go on?
No, I think that pretty well covers it. The one project that's funded by geo-bonding or whatever is Tyler Street, and that remains a piece of city infrastructure. Is that correct?
That is correct. Tyler is a geo-bonded city project.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, just to piggyback on that one question, then I had a different one. In terms of the North Tyler project, that's money we were going to spend anyway. We're just hoping to kind of supersize that sidewalk, right? It's not extra?
Yes, we did that with 10th Street to get that bridge over the creek for the project we're doing now. So we're taking a similar approach with that. We're spending the money. We're going to see if we can supersize the one side of it.
Thank you. The question I wanted to ask was, this happens every year. If you could share with the newer council members as well as the public, maybe just refresh all of us. This is a cycle that's now once a year or once every two years. Often, we kind of collaborate. The city applies for so many, and the county sometimes applies as well. Could you give an idea of what the whole total package is that's coming out of Shawnee County? And what the turnaround is? And what our reasonable expectations are of how much of these proposals might get funded?
Sure, I'll take a shot. This program comes around now on a two-year cycle. They've changed it, but I think they're now k-dots back to a two-year cycle, which, like I said, lines up very nicely because we've set aside every other year for countywide sales tax to leverage that money. So it's a nice syncing. The projects themselves that come out of that, and help me make sure I understand your question about the program itself, if that...
Well, through the MTPO especially, the ideas come from the city, but then sometimes, often, the county is applying for something as well. And so I wanted you to share what that whole package from Shawnee County looks like this year, and then give us an idea of what the timeframe is in terms of the turnaround and when we're likely to hear, and of our four or five, whatever it is, what our usual shot is and how many will actually get funded.
Sure, as you know, but maybe others don't, we do have a Complete Streets Advisory Committee that meets that includes county representation, that advises the MTPO Policy Board. And we have those conversations at that committee level and work with the county and the city on what our priorities are. The county's priority for this cycle would be completing the Deer Creek. Actually, they're calling it the Robinson, I believe, Trail Connection, which would go from Dornwood Park down to Southeast 29th, which connects very nicely to their 10-foot multi-use path that goes now to Lake Shawnee. So that's their priority. But they have other, I guess, sub-priorities that we are trying to include in this package. So all told, and I do not know the cost estimate of their proposal for that yet. So, but the trail connections, absolutely very important to them. We also have a starter levee trail on the north side there that would connect to Kansas Avenue and redress some of the surface and make a better connection to that levee top between Kansas Avenue and Topeka Boulevard. So they'll be maintaining that, and so they're very interested in that. So between our proposals here and their Deer Creek Robinson Trail extension, that would be, I think, the package coming out of Shawnee County. We will, realistically, what we've been approved for in the past really depends on who's applying statewide. We do not compete with the big region. We don't compete with Kansas City. We don't compete with Wichita. Those are removed from the pool. So we compete with everybody else statewide. And it just depends. Our biggest, our last success was a little bit over $1 million or so, $1 million, $2 million, when we did 8th Street and the others. And that would be probably the most I would expect us to achieve. So we might see something drop out of these three, but I don't expect all three. I really, I think it'd be great. I'm not going to try to jinx this here, but I would think, best-case scenario, we get the big one and maybe one of the other two.
Thank you.
There are questions from the body. We do have two individuals. One of them submitted his comments, Andy Frye spoke in support of this project. And we also have PJ Carter that would like to speak on this item.
Listening in on this item and hearing about the, is it the county's portion of it, from Robinson to, excited about that. I think this is a great idea. And also, just wanted to squeeze in a couple of notes that we know our letter was received. News been covered it, and we have still been waiting on a response. It's hard to connect with this council, not this council, but the council within the council on the issues that we've been waiting on. We have union brothers, and there are brothers outside waiting on issues. I know a lot of things is hard to get to, but we got to prioritize the community and get them back to their families as well.
PJ, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm naturally leaning into the computer because you're soft-spoken. Would you be so kind to speak into the microphone?
This is the microphone?
Yeah, you have that one and the other one there. I'm so sorry.
It's really low.
Oh, much better, much better.
All right. From the top, this proposal, I love it, especially that Dornwood to Robinson deal. Like, that would be magical out there, especially in that area. And was making a couple of notes that we know that our letter's been received. We've been waiting on a response. We have plumbers out here waiting on a response, and I'm sure they're probably waiting for public comment, which is going to have all of us here past nine. And not rushing you guys, just making note, like, I mean, there's other issues that we need to be addressed in the council within the council to address the police accountability issues. It's just like, they're not even getting the community's support to get the voices that they need to be heard.
If you wanted to sign up for public comment?
I did not. I just wanted to make that note, and that's it.
Because it's supposed to be to the issue that you signed up for right now.
Definitely, I definitely understand. I mean, and you're doing your job and running the meeting the way the meeting should be ran, and I respect that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, additional comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, we have this item in front of us. Is there a motion from the body?
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Dobler, a second by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. Comments or questions that you would like to add? Seeing none, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
And yes, the motion carries. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
Item B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout amending Section 1 and Section 2 of Ordinance Number 20257, codified at Sections 13.10.280 and 13.20.130 of the Topeka Municipal Code to repeal provisions allowing installation and repair of water and sewer lines by contractors licensed to install city utilities servicing certain developments.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, before I get into the real issue here, my phone's been buzzing. I have a daughter who has a dead car battery, so I've been trying to manage that from afar. I cannot believe a car battery is actually $230, but I can't manage that right now. So sorry, sorry for that editorial comment. I just didn't want anybody to think I was being rude by looking down there. So a couple of months ago, I proposed two amendments to the Topeka Municipal Code, which will allow city-licensed utility contractors to install water and sewer lines on commercial and industrial sites. The intent of those amendments was to eliminate problems that were occurring on new developments in Topeka. Although my amendments solved a few immediate problems, their wording led some plumbing contractors to think their livelihood was being threatened. I can assure you that was not the intent. Last week, I had a long discussion with a large mechanical contractor here in town who has also encountered problems with our development policies. They have promised to cooperate with city staff and other stakeholders to help craft policies that will ensure Topeka is on a level playing field for future developments. In turn, they requested that I move to rescind my amendments as a show of good faith. And that is what I'm doing tonight, and I would ask the council join me. And with that, Mayor, I would like a motion to suspend the governing body rules so that we can reconsider this item.
Okay, so we have a motion made by the deputy mayor. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nager seconds this. At this point in time, this motion and this second is in order for us to rescind the governing body rules so that we could bring back this item, making sure that everybody knows where we're at on the process. Are there any questions about this issue? Seeing none, we would, Councilwoman Hiller?
I wanted to make some comments before voting, and actually, before I would vote to even put this back on the agenda. I really, I've been uncomfortable with this all along. Have done my best to have plenty of conversations with plumbers and done my best to talk to folks about what language I thought should be better. But before we just suspend the rules and rescind, I have to confess that I'm troubled by the fact that this issue sat around for three years and didn't get resolved before. And so at this point, I feel like I need some reassurance that if we rescind now, that it will, in immediate order, get addressed and get resolved once and for all. I am convinced that it can be resolved in a collaborative way that everyone is comfortable with, from all that I've heard. And so I have no doubt that we can do it. I just want it to happen. And so with that, I want to ask a couple of questions of the city manager, I guess, for some assurance that things would go along. First, can you confirm that if we rescind or temporarily amend, however this ends up going, the two controversial sections that we passed in August tonight, that staff would be immediately assigned to research and craft language or otherwise resolve this issue in order to satisfy both the original intent of the amendment and at the same time, protect against overly broad interpretation?
Yes, I will. I believe that this is an important issue that needs to be addressed in our community in order to help with development that occurs. And I believe that staff is aware of the issues and that we can work to craft the language necessary.
Thank you. A follow-up question to that is my preference would be, and we've talked about this a little bit, that the staff would be given a very short deadline, maybe even just a month from now, so that the issue could ideally come back to this body and be finalized before the end of the year. Can you commit to that or something close to it?
Well, the timing depends on when we can set up the meetings related to the various groups. You know, staff, we can meet and have those meetings within, you know, within a week. We can have that meeting and craft our language. It's really getting to each of the stakeholders that we want to make sure we're running this by before we bring it back before the governing body. That's out of my control. I will make every effort to handle it as quickly as possible and would commit to attempting to do so before the end of the year, but not be able to promise, as we would say.
We'll see how everybody feels about that. My pitch is still trying to get it on deck. Well, I did the math on the calendar, really. This has dragged so long. And it really, we need to have a good and well-vended draft by about the 20th of November with a little slippage time in there so that it could be put on a preliminary agenda in a timely manner for the 8th or the 15th of December. I mean, we've got enough lag time that I wanted to make sure that we all had the calendar in mind and we're really pushing toward a completion. and we're really pushing toward a completion deadline. And last, based on how this has bounced back and forth, it seems clear to me that a successful, well-crafted solution to this issue should be fully vetted with a group that includes developers, engineers, mechanical contractors, architects, site work contractors or excavation people, whatever they're supposed to be called, as well as plumbers. And especially those who have been vocal on this issue before it comes back to us. And I wanted to, I know that that will take some time, but I think people are eager enough that if they're invited to come, they'll be there and be happy to have conversations. And so I wanted to ask too, if we could count on that happening before it came back to us.
Yes, we know who some of those individuals are and we'll be able to make contact with them and provide the language and get their feedback.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the staff before we suspend the governing body rules? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
Motion having passed, deputy mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The city attorney gave me some language here, but the language she has is that I would make a motion to reconsider, but a motion to reconsider wouldn't say affirmative or... Is the city attorney on?
I am, I am deputy mayor. Yes, it's just a motion to reconsider, but part of the reconsideration is to repeal subsection C out of both sections 1310-280 and 1321-30. So I would just mention the motion to reconsider and subsequently repeal the language contained in those particular lines, those particular sections. And that's the only thing this particular ordinance does.
Thank you for that. Can I simply make a motion to rescind those two amendments? Okay, well, that would be my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. City Attorney, I see there's movement in your screen. Are we okay with that?
Yes, you're okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. That's why I paused, waiting to see if you had anything to say. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
I think she had a question.
Why wait until we get a second before I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, retract.
Okay, so then we have a second for deputy mayor's motion. Councilwoman Nager, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala, you may ask your question.
Okay, so we got this kind of late and I was looking over it. I did call a couple of plumbers that I was talking with and I understand you're saying rescinding. I just want to be clear before we vote on anything, on everything that is, has a line through it and then you have the purple or this lavender lettering or, I mean, this highlighter and then everything that is lined out, that in effect puts it back to its original state before this happened in August. Is that correct?
Correct, Councilmember Valdivia Alcala. Prior to the original ordinance as it was proposed back in August, I believe, there weren't those two sections and it included those. Now they're being redacted once again.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
That is nine yeses.
Motion carries. We now move on to item C if the clerk would read.
Item 4C is request to extend the deadline for the City of Topeka Fire Service Special Committee to report to the governing body from November 10th, 2020 to no later than April 6th, 2021.
Point of order, point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to get the rules reinstated? Or they automatically reinstate themselves? We suspended the rules?
For that item.
Yes, Councilmember Valdivia Alcala, they were suspended for that particular item and then they just go back into effect. Thank you for asking that, that's a great question.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, city clerk, you may proceed reading the item.
Item 4C is request to extend the deadline for the City of Topeka Fire Service Special Committee to report to the governing body from November 10th, 2020 to no later than April 6th, 2021.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, back in March, I asked to extend this deadline to November for the conduct of this committee regarding fire service. Well, it was shortly after that that we all got busy related to the actions with COVID. And so this was one of those ones where getting a large group of individuals together to talk about something didn't make sense and we were dealing with all the other issues. So I did not move forward with this. I do think that this is something that is a priority of the governing body to discuss, but rather than assuming and moving forward in a shorter timeframe trying to move this item, I wanted to bring it forward tonight and request your consideration of creating a new deadline if this indeed is a charge that you want the city council to move forward with. I think that we looked at this and from a number of different directions and it does make sense, in my opinion, to consider moving forward with starting the meetings with this, with the Fire Service Committee. But basically looking to confirm that by asking your permission to extend the deadline to April 6th of 2021 and begin our meetings here in November with this group. We'll need to obviously check to make sure that those individuals that were selected, both the local citizens and some staff positions and also the council members that were going to serve on this committee, that they're still willing to serve. Once we verify that, we'll set our first meeting to begin to go through the process of analyzing all of the different studies that have been done in the past, provide them to the committee members to begin review and then have a meeting to present on them and discuss them. Then there are a number of different issues that are outlined and they're still included in your packet that I put down regarding work that needed to be done. Some of those additional ones that we talked about back when we had the discussion was looking at prevention and suppression and comparing those as actions that we need to be considering. Looking at ambulance service was another note that was mentioned. And then also looking at whether or not, you know, what level of funding we want to have and what type of service amount that we want to have and trying to determine that. So with that, I'll stand for questions and see if I can provide any further information if needed. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lesser seconds. Additional comments or questions from the body? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city manager, appreciate that. Something I want to point out, two points a little further. This was a choice on your part to have this panel be basically rooted in the fire department with fire personnel and people who support fire. I know there's two different ways to do that. I just want everybody to be aware. I can see pros and cons of that and worry a little bit that the public engagement really needs, I hope, will be multifaceted in terms of taking in different points of view, not just advocating for one. It can fall that way, it has in the past on fire and I just hope that we can be balanced on that.
Mayor? Yeah, my response would be, I think if we look at the number of individuals, there are a number of citizens that I don't believe they have bent one way or another related to the fire service or not as far as expansion or, you know, reduction. And then also, I think with the variety of council members that will be on there, we'll have a good breakdown of input that they'll be able to receive. But there is going to be time, my intent is for them, be time for public comment, that we would go through this and then set ourselves up to talk about what this committee is looking at recommending and then seek some public input on it once we get to that point.
Second question, if I may. We had discussed, and I think you talked about publicly back when this was conceived of before, that there would be a charge to the committee that at least one of their options budget-wise would be maybe the only option. So I want to clarify with you that it'd be budget comparable to the budget authority that we have today.
I think that that's almost a given, given the environment that we're in right now related to budget, that we have to look at something that's neutral, whether or not we can, you know, there would have to be a change in priority related to the governing body as far as increasing the budget, but definitely looking to have the various options considered as far as whether it's revenue or I should say expense neutral related to where we're at right now, knowing that any type of change of additional fire stations, requiring additional personnel, would be a change in the priority of the governing body and would affect other areas of the budget. So that part is going to be critical for us to analyze as part of the process. The other thing that goes along with that is even looking at varying levels of service. If we were to look at advanced life support service and expanding that across the city, if that was a priority, there is a price tag that comes along with that. And so those are the types of things that we have to analyze to determine, do they make sense for our community? And I think that's going to be the critical part that this committee does, is determine what level of service is necessary in our community. What type of service do we want?
Thank you. Sometimes the money can be the elephant in the room and I just wanted to go ahead and get it out on the floor while we're talking about it. Thank you again, that's it, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor.
Y'asalamu alaikum, badrillah, sorry.
City manager, I had a question. I looked over the list this morning and I don't have it right in front of me, but I did notice that obviously Jim Green is no longer with us. So who would be acting in his capacity? The other thing is, at first you did not have me on the committee and then once I pushed it, you put me on the committee, which is quite important since this does impact District 2. So I'm wondering how the other volunteers that are citizen-based were chosen or if we as councilperson have, get a choice on an individual or individuals that are put on there without the committee obviously becoming too unseemly.
Well, back when we started this process, I asked each of the, I asked the governing body, I think in a general way, if you had anyone that you knew of that would be interested in serving on this committee to provide me their names. And that's how some of the names were, how the individuals ended up on this committee was they were recommendations from governing body members, individuals in the community that expressed an interest in being a part of the decision-making and recommending and serving for our city, but not in a, you know, long-term capacity where they serve on a board, where they're appointed by the governing body for a long term. And so that's really how those individuals came about as being recommended for participation on the committee. And if we, and I think that's the other thing that I'll say is if, when we first meet, if the governing body members that are serving on the committee feel we need more citizens to participate, we can sure do some additional looking at recruiting if they so desire.
Thank you for that because I do believe after looking at the list, it will be important to have some, at least one person that lives in that area of North Topeka that is intimately impacted by Station 11. So I appreciate that, thank you.
And then regards to the question related to Jim Green, the county emergency representative will be there and so we'll have coverage as it relates to emergency management issues that they would bring forward. I don't see any specific loss of knowledge that will be there other than with Jim Green, we would have more specific local understanding of how he works with the fire department and that's different now. So I don't see any issues related to the loss of that. We'll have the same types of pieces of information from the county.
Councilwoman Valdivia?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand what the city manager said got in the way of this committee getting to work because of the size of the galleries and so forth. I'd like to ask if we can get updates before the end date of April 6th as the committee gets its work so that those updates, if they're shared with the council and the public as well, that may generate even more interest for people to get involved and interested in the work of the committee. I think generally that's a good practice if we can, when we're doing committee work, that we give at least some updates before the end of our expected recommendations so that people can follow along. Because sometimes it's assumed that, well, what happened to this? Did it just fall in a dark spot and nobody's looking at it? But if we update on a regular basis, I think that's helpful. So that's just my request that if we can have that.
So as a follow-up to that, Councilman, do you want to see them as oral updates or written? Or would you both? Or and/or do you want them like every two months or at a major event?
You know, for me, more and more I see people saying, well, we saw what you guys did on council meeting last night. And I think more and more people are watching us on our council meetings and they are going to a website and looking up like your weekly report. So a combination, you know, it doesn't have to be long, but at least something that the governing bodies informed, but at the same time, the general public has an ease of access to that information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilman Duncan?
I guess I would just offer this to the council members who sit on that committee and the future members of that committee. It seems a little short-sighted and sort of a wasted opportunity to me to bring all these people together to do this work and give them the instant constraint that the only option you can come out of this with has to be within budget. Now, I know that's responsible and I understand the purpose of that, but I feel like that they need to understand that is the primary goal, but we would like other options. And if they come to us and say, well, there's an option B and you're right, it's going to cost $3 million more a year, but this is what our assessment of that and there's even an option C. I feel like if we give them that first constraint, we have instantly handcuffed them to sort of guiding them towards certain decisions without some freedom of offering up, thinking outside the box and some other ideas. So I would just offer that up there, that I hope there'd be some discussion and opportunity for them to provide some other options because that's why we're here. Then we can make the decision based on what they bring, what we like or don't like. Thank you very much.
Additional comments or questions after this? Seeing none. I think the city manager has the feedback on how to proceed. We do need to vote on, oh, council, oh, we do need to vote on with regards to extending that deadline. And we did have a motion and a second, if memory serves me right. So at this point in time, if there's no additional questions, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Heller?
Yes.
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
And having voted yes, the motion carries. We now move on to the public comment, unless there is something that has changed. The only person I have signed up is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Evening, governing body. The reason I am speaking tonight is I have sent everybody through email and to the city clerk, my concerns about contracts that are in excess of $50,000, that I believe, after looking at the last series of them that I have filed cores on, I think it's time for the council to have, to vote on these contracts before they're approved by the City Manager. And so anything in excess of $50,000, I would like to be brought before this body for a vote and your approval, up or down, or your modifications of said contracts and agreements. I also, as I was sitting here, I was thinking about some of the problems I've heard from council people over the years, and especially in the last few, about the timing of items brought forth on the agenda. And so I would also put into such language, I've given you a couple samples of such language through email, that any such contract would be noticed to the council and the city clerk at least two regular meetings before it is brought forward for a vote. I think what that would do is that would eliminate the jolting surprise of large items being brought to you that you have no knowledge of, like a $1.3 million stormwater crater dug into a perfectly good park to supposedly drain a parking lot, which it does not drain. Things like that, you shouldn't just have put on the agenda a week ahead of time. You need to have notice, perhaps a scope of what that project is, a summary outline. These can be done with one page. Anybody that's in management should know how to do it. And then if you have questions ahead of time before that meeting, you can certainly ask, and you can ask at the meeting. You know, you don't have to approve things that are put on the agenda that night. And I would strongly recommend that occasionally you might slow down what the city staff does, because we're spending exorbitant amounts of money, in my opinion. This last contract I looked at for consulting to Woods, they were billing us out of Chicago, was to rewrite our stormwater ordinance, and then they wrote a handbook. And by the time I read a good chunk of the contract and realized they could continue billing us, and I asked for those items, the budget was now a half million dollars. Well, you could have done a number of blocks of distribution lines in some of these neighborhoods that have been breaking for 10, 12 years and haven't been fixed, other than we patch them and then they break again, they break again. So that was utility contracts, so of course I'm talking about water, I'm talking about stormwater. I think that it's time to review how we approve contracts and make sure that we, the governing body, you, are actually approving these things and making sure that you're seeing what's going on in this city. That's your fiduciary duty. You can't walk away from it. That's your duty of oversight. You cannot walk away from it. You can delegate certain things, but you cannot delegate away your responsibility and your oversight. So I'm saying these things because I'm very concerned at some of what I'm seeing in the last six months with these contracts. I'm shocked at the amounts of money we're spending. I'm shocked at how little we're getting for that money. I'm shocked that we have staff that should be doing at least some of this work, writing the ordinances, consulting with our engineers. We already have in-house engineers, and, but especially our legal department should be writing our own ordinances. Thank you for allowing me to have a-
Mr. Ledbetter, do you need additional time?
I do not. If you'll just review the emails I've sent, and I did copy them to the city clerk, anybody that wants those can ask for those from the city clerk, any member of the public. So just do a core request. I've done them, lots. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the announcements. If the clerk would read.
We do not have an agenda to go over. The next meeting, agenda meeting is, pardon me, City Council meeting is November 10.
City Manager.
I have no additional comments tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
No comments, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody not to forget to vote. It's very, very crucial. Doesn't matter who you vote for, just as long as you vote, who you feel is the best candidate. Also, I wanted to say not to forget that October is Fire Prevention Month. We had another couple fires this last, past week, and it's really, really sad. So I will check the first part of November to see where we need some smoke detectors on our council, and hopefully we can get those out soon and get the word out. But we're just, we're just really, really lucky. That's all I can say. In certain districts in this city, the wiring's bad, the houses are closer, and I'm surprised that we haven't had more fatalities than we have. So again, we need to really, really think about that with winter coming and help our firefighters. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanted, I know the next couple weeks can be very busy for you, Mayor, so I just, I just, I guess wish you Godspeed the next couple weeks.
Councilwoman Pabilla.
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo Councilwoman Ortiz's comments about the vote. You won't have to hear about that "C" thing from me anymore. But now it's the vote, so I appreciate the fact that when I went, it was very quick. They're doing a good job of managing the crowds, and there are some good crowds coming in to vote in advance, and so I'm pleased to see that. So take the time to do that. It's important that we all do that, and I wish everyone well, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to reiterate, go vote. My mom and I went yesterday around 4:30, 4:45, and from getting out of the car to getting back in the car with much celebration and cheers, it took us 15 minutes. Our Shawnee County Elections Office is doing a wonderful job at keeping people safe and getting people through. If you do have any questions, please feel free to reach out to them, either by phone or by email. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
No comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Well, 2020, as we all know, has been an odd year, so let me add to that oddness, and he actually left, so he won't hear me say it, but I believe Mr. Ledbetter is right. And I have talked with the City Manager and staff, and it is my intention to bring something before this body that would have us look at approving anything, consulting contracts that exceed $50,000 or more. We can talk about later how that framework would work and what that would look like, but I have started those conversations, and hopefully we can get something in front of this body sooner rather than later. The second thing I'll say tonight is, everyone's talked about voting, we're not meeting on November 3rd because it's Election Day, and we've afforded ourselves the privilege of taking that day off. My personal preference would be that I believe that it should be a federal holiday, but I can't control that. My preference would be that it's a state holiday, but again, I can't control that. What I can do is bring before this body at some point, hopefully before next November, something that makes Election Day a city holiday. And my intent with that would not only be to recognize it as a city and its importance, but to also provide our staff a half-day off to go and vote. We can't control what businesses and others would do across the city, but we can certainly set an example that we hope they may follow to provide citizens on Election Day the opportunity to get to the polls and do their civic duty. So at some point between now and next November, I hope to craft that, put something together, and bring it before the body so that we can afford city employees the same, the same privilege we give ourselves there in this body. So with that, thank you, everybody.
All right. We have Councilman Lesser.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had real quick one thing, just wanted to, a thank you to Forestry Department and City Manager. I brought, it was brought to my attention, a dangerous intersection in the district that we had overgrowth of a couple trees from a constituent, and I sent an email to Forestry and to City Manager, and it was taken care of that afternoon to eliminate that dangerous intersection. So job well done, and thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I too wish you Godspeed, Mayor, and the best of results on Election Day. Encourage everyone to vote, and that's it.
Thank you all for your well wishes. At this point in time, we do have two executive sessions this evening. If the city attorney would be so kind to read the parameters.
Motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. Due to the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body, Human Resources Director Jackie Russell, and myself. No action will be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body?
Move approval.
We have a motion for approval by the Lady Mayor and a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have 10 yeses.
10 having voted yes, we recess into executive session. We will allow a minute or two for the chambers to be empty. We're ready, Mayor. All right. We have concluded the first executive session, and there is no action taken. At this point in time, we do need to enter into a second executive session. If the city attorney would please read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss confidential employment matters pertaining to non-elected personnel as justified by KSA 75-4319B1 in order to protect the privacy of those discussed. Due to the discussion, the following individuals should be present, members of the governing body and Human Resources Director Jackie Russell. No action will be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
We have heard the parameters. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion. Councilman Dobler, seconds. Additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing no comments or questions, do we, we will vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. At this point in time, we will allow a minute to vacate the hall, the chamber, and then after that, we will proceed with our executive session following the proper parameters. Does anybody need a break really quick before we enter this one?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, so why don't we take a five-minute recess before we enter this second session? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is pretty funny about this. Is that just weird?
Just let me know if you want to back up.
It's here.
And I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Love me that much.
We saw you didn't have a spoon, though, when it came. I know, I know. Is that long-spanned or is it cooked? Chicken pot.
Okay.
Zoom tonight.
I couldn't believe she didn't have a spoon.
Okay, we're ready, Mayor.
We are now, coming out of the executive session, there is a plea for us to reengage within the same parameters. However, we would request 45 minutes not to be exceeded for us to continue the same discussion. Do we have a motion to enter, to continue this executive session? Councilwoman Nager makes the motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Lesser makes, seconds the motion. All of you in favor of entering into the same executive session with the same parameters, not to exceed 45 minutes, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, so we have nine having voted yes. Councilwoman Ortiz, for the record, if somebody could please make a vote, voted no. We now recess again into an executive session, not to exceed 45 minutes, under the same parameters. All right. Thank you very much, everybody. We have concluded our executive session. No actions have been taken. At this point in time, being that there's no other items in front of the body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.